Seven one, seven oh one, I'm going to call the regular meeting for a selectmen's order. First item of business is the pledge of allegiance. So like, would you like?
The pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the people who we stand. One nation, a body of God, individual, which is the ready.
All members of the board of selectmen are here in presence. We'll do the approval of minutes from March seventh.
I'm moved to approve the Board of Selectmen budget workshop slash special meeting minutes from March seventh, twenty twenty four.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Karen? For the regular meeting.
I move to, I do have a correction, would you like that first or after I make the motion?
Let's move it then we'll make a correction.
Okay, move to approve, May seventh, twenty twenty four, Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second? Made and seconded, discussion or corrections? What's like in my?
Yes, I just have one on page sixteen, it's Wayne Sherry and not Will Sherry. But other than that, that's all I have.
The spelling is S H A R Y. Any other corrections?
Yes.
Yes. Hey?
Well, I thought Marie said something.
She did, but she yielded some volume.
Yeah, page seventeen on the vote, the last poll really paid to improve the town budget. It says select me the ag loss does not favor support of the budget fund balance. I recall that I said I did support the, the budget and also did not support the fund balance. I'd just like to have it corrected that I didn't support either the budget or the, the fund balance.
So noted? Great.
Yes, on page three, under D. Where you have suggestions for corrections, they're actually not suggestions, they're corrections that are necessary, so. Verbiage, I don't know if it matters to anyone, it did to me, but under page four of the previous meeting we had. I asked for a correction because we put eight hundred dollars for the installation of soccer field like in the playground. Again, there's eight hundred thousand dollars in debt money that we received, not eight hundred. So I'm asking for another correction.
Got that settled? Any other corrections? All in favor of the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this point, actually, you know what, let's do public participation and then I'm going to ask to take something out of order. So this is our first public participation of the evening, it's one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the board of selectmen. I'll first ask if there's anybody here in the room who would like to address the board and then I'll provide the same opportunity to anybody who's with us online and in fact, there isn't. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the numbers of the board? So please state your name and your address. Yes, sir.
Well, Anderson, eighty nine Main Street, Broadway. Good, I'm bringing this up for information purposes only, it's outside of your control. But I think it's important that you're aware. It's a issue with Facebook, which is obviously outside of your control. But the Broadbrook Library made a post some time ago and we put in a line that says, we don't censor books, but we do not censor books. That post was taken down by Facebook.
Really?
Without explanation. So the second time we put up a post with the same state and it was taken down again and then we were told that if it happens again, your account will be closed. So we, I took that one line out and the post was acceptable. Now other libraries can post that they're removing books from the shelf for a purpose, which is censorship. But we can't say we don't do it. The reason I bring it up is because that is an item where we're being censored. And we're, there is no recourse whatsoever, you have nothing, you get no explanation, you can request an appeal, it's useless waste, we get some form statement back and nothing ever happens. And the reason I bring it up is because it affects everybody. It affected the library, which is a local entity, that's why I'm bringing it up here, if it was personal, I would never bring. There's no, nothing anybody can do about it, except we need to be aware that Facebook is making decisions and those done by computer and algorithms, not human beings and the human beings that review it ignore it. And many of the things built into the algorithm were, came from Washington DC as strong requests that Facebook controls certain types of speech. That's as far as that goes, but that's factual because there's records of it happening. Happened to Twitter also, so I'm just pointing it out that the freedoms we enjoy in this country are deteriorating and we need to be aware. I don't see a problem in this town. But I do see a problem overall and we all live here. That's where I'm at on that, I'm just pointing it out and nothing more is said.
Thank you, sir, interesting topic. Other comments from members of the public? Yes, sir, name and address.
John Barclay, Kings Court, Rob Brooke. Just curious question, don't sort of see the back parking lot?
Yes.
What's it there for?
Are you talking, so we have a, we have a dumpster that we use for refuse, there's also, it's a
One where my car is parked next to right now.
I don't know where you
It's our, right in the back corner, it's our dumpster, it has the, the lights of the carport, the lighting project.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's just curious, it's all of a sudden it's there.
It's, it's not going to be there for, for good, we're just finishing LED conversion. Actually, I think we've removed fifty light fixtures from this building.
Thirty.
Thirty light fixtures.
Wow.
Well, right, but at the, at the same time, it's less energy to be concerned.
I'm getting more information than I really expected.
Point taken, any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I'd now like to take out of order, if I could, agenda item nine A, discussion and vote on the town of East Windsor Broadbrook Fire Department's budget.
So Luke?
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Chief Artary, you have an addendum to your, an amendment to your budget.
There was a mistake made on the twenty seventh week payroll. It was listed at eleven thousand dollars end of last year. So it should be a thousand dollars, it's a ten thousand dollar reduction in our budget.
So that's the only changes, it's a ten thousand in the twenty seventh payroll? Anything else you want us to know before we deliver?
No, just send it on.
All right.
Thank you.
Assistant Chief Bancroft, anything from you?
No, I'll say, thank you very much.
Okay, so we need to, for, for the ordinance establishing the Broadbrook Fire, the town of East Windsor Broadbrook Fire Department, we need to review and either amend or approve and forward along Broadbrook Fire Department's budget. You have the chief's recommended change, are there any other changes that any member would like to see? That motion?
Move to approve the Broadbrook Fire Department budget at thirty, let's have a bad page now, nine hundred and seventy thousand six.
No, one million.
My next one.
Oh, I apologize, okay, one million five, five oh five and forward to the Board of Finance.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Courtney Sweet?
Thank you.
Thank you, taking us on a turn.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, there is, in your packet, there is the notice of public hearing that was filed by the town to advance the community development block grants. The project we're doing with the housing authority, this is something that's, that requires us to do, I think it's to your heart of the department housing, requires us to do to move the, the project along, we've done this bunch of the times. But it's included in your packet, that public hearing will take place on Thursday, April fourth, at six thirty right here, so that's our next selectman's night, at six thirty, usually that hearing is very short. But just so you're aware of that. Okay, we have some, we have a reappointment, Maria Welton's term as a member of the North Central Health District Committee is up. I'll tell you, she's a very active member and I think she's a nurse by background, she brings a lot to the health district and she's inclined to continue serving and I'm glad to have her. But I've heard her reappointment to you guys for consideration.
Make a motion that we reappoint Maria Welton to the North Central Health District Committee for a term expiring April first, two thousand twenty seven.
Is there a second? Second, motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, okay. Brings us in turn to agenda item ninety, discussion and approval of the fifty three ten grant application. This actually, we're going to not take action on, the, the town has purchased three new buses within the last, or has begun the process of purchasing three new buses within the last year. We don't have a need for a, a fourth one, really, and Melissa asked that we rescind this and, and not move forward, so. There's no action necessary unless anybody wants to countermand that.
Did you say what she, she said?
I think it's because we have three out order. I'd like to table agenda item nine C and take that up after our executive session.
Make a motion to table nine C.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Sauerhoffer, demographic study, now before Walter was making his way up, I, I apologize, I distributed the the quotes from the three different companies late, but I think the the recommendation from the, the CSG consultant that we're using is, is going to be pretty evident once Joe goes and explains what they are. One company is from Ohio, Delaware, Ohio. One is a single guy from Simsbury and the other is a civil engineering and construction firm from, I think down, down a class. So Joe, CSG reviewed these?
CSG reviewed and obviously, I, I took a brief look at them, I did some research of my own of what entailed in demographic and CSG's recommendation, who they've worked with in the past, says that SLAM, demographic study will give us the most in-depth study of the enrollment in the district, which is what districts have come for, and in anticipation of what the growth will be. They've worked with them, they just got done with a project in Rodden. They, they come very highly recommended from the few people I talked to in the engineering world. I couldn't, I did not talk to anybody that they've done a demographic study with, but they are the lowest cost and according to CGS, we're going to get one heck of a study, they want to work with planning and zoning, they want to work with the subcommittee. And basically, they're just going to look over the community and it's more of a more of a study on the community that is versus anything really to do with what sizes are our schools, it's just an enrollment and a projection of where we'll be in ten years. Which, you know, may help all of us.
Questions or comments?
I did notice that that SLAM is the, is the least expensive.
Yes.
And I also noticed that they're the only ones that actually said how long they would take the rest.
Yes.
Which was, I thought, encouraging, maximum of three months.
I think it's Cropper, who's a, a single shingle guy from Simsbury. He, what I reviewed is sort of like he was mostly compiling data from the past, not projecting it into the future. And the, the company from Ohio. One of the things that turned me off about them is that they were, they were the add-on costs were considerable, they were already on the high end of the three. But they were going to charge us another twenty-five hundred for any person presentation for the Board of Education and there were a couple other add-ons in there that seemed to be excessive.
Question, comment?
Sure.
So I noticed that the proper GIS, the good appear, Crowder, he had a list of his projects since two thousand and five, he's got like forty different pool of, I hear.
I think they're looking at the wrong one. And that's
It's proper here in GIS in the bottom. Yeah, I was confused about that.
It was a little confusing.
It wants us, they have two say Crowder GIS.
Right, that's two different countries.
Yeah, okay. So you see that?
Yeah, that's, that is. Oh, you know what, I may have just attached the
Oh, you're covering case in the wrong one. Yeah, that's what I did. So well, the people Crowder was nice in the sense that he has some detailed questions, but he didn't tell us anything about his expertise or his work. Experience, the Cropper gave us a list of forty or so, I didn't count them, but it was like about forty different projects that they've worked on since two thousand and five. And has a nice scope of service and these costs for these, and also gave us several pages of data analysis and forecasting methodologies. And the, the one from SLAM doesn't have any information at all about any work that they've done. It says, it just has their names and the two principles plus their titles. But I'm hesitant to rely on somebody saying somebody's good, because I'm supposed to, you know, we're supposed to make an independent determination from, from the presentations. So I don't want to ignore their proposals, because on the face of it, the proper GIS has shown us they have extensive experience and on the face of it, the SLAM doesn't say anything other than the names of the two principles, doesn't say anything about their experience, so. I'm just wondering, do we have anything specific negative against proper GIS with all this experience?
Outside of the fact that they're not in state?
They also reference, they, they're under, and I know they've done a little bit of work in Connecticut, but mostly it's, it's not in Connecticut and they reference a lot of county level stuff, I'm not sure that they have a clear as clear an understanding of how things work here.
Well, they did Windsor Public Schools, they did Ellington Public Schools, they did Madison Public Schools, trouble to public schools in New Orleans, but Windsor and Ellington are very close and problem is, and they have some good schools out of, out of the area, including like Wellesley, which is a great, well, great school district. But the problem I have with SLAM is that they don't tell anything about their experience. Having referenced any jobs, they don't say anything about what they've done. I just have a hard time saying, pick this one, it doesn't tell us anything that they've done, with this one, they're telling us they've done like forty, including five in that. So, so Joe was asking, do we have anything against proper GIS?
We, do we? No, no, I'm, you know, I mean, like I say, they're not in state, I, I I prefer to do it with somebody that's close to me, but I understand what you're saying. Um, um, again, I have zero experience in demographics myself. I know CSG worked with them in Rodden. That's all I, you know, that, that's all I mean, I would be more than happy to get a list of where they work, we did not really request that, we requested pricing on demographics.
It's not a ton of money and I'm going to, I will support whoever's on the, whatever, whatever names on the resolution, I don't, does somebody already put a name on there for resolution? Oh, so I'm, I'm going to vote to get it done and vote to support it, I'm just making a point that it'd be nice to have more information about them, it's not your fault.
But do note it for future, I mean, we can only learn from our mistakes.
It's not our mistake.
Well, my mistake.
It's not your mistake?
Well, this guy didn't
I could have got more information. Okay, fair enough. It's not your mistake.
No.
Okay. Murray?
Just because we were giving these documents tonight, and I just been, that was, yeah, I'm, I'm not being blamed, things happen, I'll prove these to her rather quickly. To me, the difference between the one that Keith referring to in this one, they're looking to collect data, that's old data. I don't care about the old data, I only care about what's going to happen in the future, what's going to happen over the next ten years, we already know, get our own data for what's happened in the last ten years. Who is in operating, all of that stuff, but it's moving forward, it's what I'm interested in, so because of that, I'll make a motion that, um if nobody else has been talking, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and authorize the approval of the higher SLAM on, for the school in one projections project.
There a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to make a comment, like, it was a little bit harder to pick out with SLAM, but they do have to use a similar methodology as this other one.
Right.
And I just kind of popped in and they're a nationwide company, although they're located in Blaskenberry, there's all over the United States, so it's kind of maybe similar to, you know, Ohio firm, in that respect, it's giant. But, so it's not just a shame, though.
I can see that, appreciate that. Feel some more data there.
So anyway.
Thanks.
We have to amend our motion, Mary, to authorize Jason's signature.
Need to authorize his patient's signature.
Then my second too.
Motion's been amended, seconded, been accepted, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, John.
Don't mean Russia. Well, they, they don't call it SLAM for nothing.
Okay, the next item is a memorandum agreement between the town and the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. Basically affiliating the East Windsor Police Department with the Connecticut Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. This is something that was brought to my attention after discussion with Chief Carl by Detective Roberts. Would one of you like to speak to this?
Thank you. For those who don't know me, my name's Scott Roberts, I'm a detective corporal with the East Windsor Police Department. I'm here to get MOU signed, hopefully signed to partner with the Connecticut State Police Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, which is called ICAC, full name. Basically, the goal of this unit is to preemptively investigate crimes so that children don't actually fall victims to these internet bullying, cyber crimes and such, child pornography is a big deal. So who runs it? Connecticut State Police in tandem with the FBI and hopefully with the East Windsor Police Department will run it cooperatively. We already do now, just not with a joint, uh, cooperative agreement between us and the state. What, what does the unit actually do? I think I touched on it briefly, they investigate cases of digital technology ranging from extortion to sex assaults involving suspects and victims, suspects or victims' cell phones. Task force assists with affiliate agencies, which would be us. With search warrants, arrest operations, and they help rescue children as a result of the joint investigations. How would it benefit the East Windsor Police Department and the town? So the officer that would be involved from the East Windsor Police Department would probably be out of the detective division. They would receive specific training, the state would help provide template language for search warrants, they would provide manpower for any type of raids that we needed or any type of investigative services. They also reimburse for cellphone trainings and hardware software, which is a huge benefit. Not only can we use that type of equipment for these types of crimes, but we can use them for murders, for any, any other type of crime that we're using to investigate. In the way that everything's going digitally these days, every single crime leads to a cellphone through a computer and that's essentially how we solve these. What would we need to provide? So because we're a small department, we would be providing one person and we're only, we would only be providing them at the Cyber tip investigations portion, it's, it's in the MOU, it's page nine, it's lowest level. And basically, all we're saying is that we agree that if a cyber tip comes in, that we will investigate it with the help of the state police. They will bring in their task force, which provides about six to eight people and all the resources that come along with it. Wouldn't incur any overtime outside of the police department, which we would investigate the crime anyway, so it really is a moot point with regards to money or, or overtime reasons. So this, for those who don't have the MOU, Cyber tip investigations level of, of participation states this agency agrees to investigate cyber tip referrals associated with their jurisdiction and pursue them thoroughly. This agency agrees to report monthly to the ICAC commander or his designated on the status of all referred cyber tips. And this agency agrees to report monthly ICAC stats as required, so basically, it's just a joint collaboration between the state and the town of East Windsor. And I respectfully ask that we go into this partnership.
Thank you, Detective, sure. Chief Carl, any comments, any concerns, any, anything to add?
Everything you said was true. It's, this is not unlike other things that we do with Charles, I just saw the governor's passport for, it's something that's Scott and Julia are world-class, I'll say that all, to be able to pass me, I'll figure, and any help that we can get, while you guys sign and tell me we're here.
Thank you, sir. But thanks for bringing this forward, much appreciated. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I was just curious, like, how do we integrate that cyber tip thing into our community, do we educate like teachers, students, whatnot, like here's a way that you can, here's a doorway into this program?
That's an excellent question, because part of this incorporates training for teachers. It incorporates training for the kids and exposing them to what are the dangers of this if you enter into this realm. The dark web, all those different things, so they actually come in and provide PowerPoint presentations and we can actually provide it to the schools, so.
Okay, thanks.
Right, yeah, just real quick, it moves to policies set forth by the steering committee. Who's the steering committee composed of in that?
Say it again?
On page ten, it says the agency agrees to follow ICAC guideline as well as policies set forth by the steering committee.
That's a good question, we, so this is a general guideline, it's an MOU that just allows us to cooperate, to cooperate between agencies, however we would not change any policies that we do at the East Windsor Police Department, so we would follow our guidelines and our policy from their speeders, our DoDs. Regardless of if, if the steering committee wanted us to go a certain way, it's still our jurisdiction and we would still control the investigation. So I don't have any answer to the questions for us with the steering committees, but I can tell you that we have a contact submit in the court who's in charge of that and I can get that information to you from the minute.
Just because my concern is exactly what you pointed out, are they going to tell us if we have to change our internal policies to match, that's all from there, so. You already had that answer, that's, that's fine.
Do we propose this tonight? Have you a motion?
Sure.
Have to make a motion to authorize and direct the first selectment to sign a memorandum, memorandum of understanding between the town of East Windsor and the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection regarding the Internet Crimes Against Children ICAC Task Force.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, Karen?
Thank you for pursuing that, I think it's much needed in this town, that we have, let's see, on top of what's happening for those of you guys, then, for taking the extra step.
Okay. No, because I'm not sure she's going to pay for that.
No question.
Okay, so I'm going to hand you that. We've been provided notice by our congressional offices that the congressionally directed spending application period is open. It is, as usual, a very quick turnaround, submissions are due back to Senator Uh, it is, as usual, a very quick turnaround. Um, submissions are due back to Senator Murphy's office by April fourteenth. Which is less than three weeks away. Um, so. These are the guidelines that the Senate offices are using this year in the event that we wanted to apply for them. Let me explain how this works. So. Municipalities submit, uh, applications to the congressional offices for, uh, specific projects within a community. Those projects need to fit into an appropriations category that, that fits in with the federal budget. Uh, and then they need to score through the, um, the committee, uh, markup process in Washington. Uh, to be included, hopefully in a budget that is passed and signed, passed by Congress and signed by the president. Uh, there are specific guidelines for what does and does not qualify that is included in here. There are specific, uh, projects that require a funding match and some that don't. Um, so what I've asked town staff to do, um, is kind of start brainstorming if there's anything that might be relevant to. Um, the town of East Windsor or their departments to try and, and see if we can secure federal funds. But I wanted to provide you all with the guidelines so you can take a look at it. Um, my plan for this is to have some sort of a proposal, uh, or not a proposal, a, um. A kind of a review sheet for April fourth. So that you all can take a look at what staff has come up with, but also we need to decide if there's anything amongst the four of you that we want to try to move forward. Um, we need to have a public hearing on that the week after that in order to submit the applications. Uh, by April fourteenth. So that is the tick tock is wicked tight. Um, it's also subject to change. Um, so I might get an email saying the new date is April eighth or the new date is April thirtieth. We're working on April fourteenth because that's what they've said. They've also said it might change. So that's kind of an overview. This is, this puts some thoughts together if you have them. It, it would be helpful. If you could send me emails ahead of time so I can incorporate those into what I'll have for you in two weeks. Um, but if not, we can try our best to implement those on the fly. Um, so that's the plan. We'll talk about it on April fourth. We'll try and set a hearing for the following week and with a target dated meeting that April fourteenth submission. Questions, comments, observations?
Jason, the, um, the public hearing, I, I don't remember exactly what the charter said. I think you probably looked at it, but I thought. That, uh, the right applications have to be approved at town meetings. Um, because.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's Tommy. I misspoke. I meant to say Tommy. I, I just misspoke. I had the. CBD, CEDG thing in my mind.
I figured you spoke, okay. So, so we have to plan, um, we, we have to vote at a meeting, schedule a town meeting.
Right, and that's what we would be doing on April fourteenth.
Right.
We send a copy of this over to the Sura, uh, WPCA?
I haven't distributed this, uh, amongst anybody other than the departments that likely have something they qualify.
Quite a big section for them.
There is, yeah.
Do we have a range of money that we're talking about here, like to be capable of projects?
It's, um, it's, there is no cap on the number or the, the size that you can request. Um, it is somewhat competitive in that my understanding, and this is anecdotal. My understanding is that the, the House side have a capped number of requests and a capped number of dollars for their districts. No such thing occurs on the Senate side, but there's also, you gotta apply a degree of reasonableness standard across the state. Um. That, that's it. I wouldn't be shy. Um, I had a conversation with Senator Murphy, uh, last fall. And he indicated that the reason East Windsor had done so well on previous round is because they don't get a lot of qualified applications from towns our size. So that was actually encouraged and to try again. Um, so, I'm, I'm going to just leave it there and say, don't be shy.
Here, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Mrs. O'Doyle.
Yeah.
Good evening, how are you? Good. Want to talk to us about, um, the advanced benefit strategies application?
Sure, um. There were some inquiries about whether we do flexible spending or dependent care reimbursement accounts. And we found out that they never have had them here. Um, I had them previously at my other job and it allows employees to put away pre-tax dollars. Um, with caps from the IRS for either childcare or eldercare or, um, for medical. Copays, uh, procedures, things that are covered, vision, dental. Um, I used it as when my child was young for braces. So, but it's pre-tax and if you don't use it, you lose it. Um. The flexible spending is a little bit different than the dependent care flexible spending. The town fronts and then gets their money back over the year. Uh, dependent care, they can't take out until the money's in there. So that's the difference between the two accounts, but they'd be open at the same time. Um, we went to One Digital, which is our benefits consultant, and they came back with, um. Three, four groups. And their recommendation was advanced benefit strategies and they are who I happen to use at my previous employer also. Um, so we are asking for permission to. Apply for it and get it set up with the intention of it being set up for seven one. Along with our regular medical enrollment and there would be employee meetings for people to know about it. And people would have to make a decision whether they wanted to do it. Um, so four dollar and seventy-five cent fee we are charging to the participants. Um, so there will not be a cost for the monthly participant fee, but there would be the implementation cost in the annual renewal. Which is four hundred and twenty dollars townwide. Per year.
Go ahead.
Four hundred and twenty dot, four hundred and twenty dollars a year for taking the program.
To have a program.
To have the program.
And four dollars and seventy-five cents a month for anybody who wants to participate.
Anyone that wants to partake will pay four seventy-five.
Some municipalities incur that cost, so the employees don't. Our, our recommendation is to have participating employees cover that, so there's. A de minimis out of pocket for the, the town of, of four twenty-five, whatever she said.
Fourth one.
Just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly.
What's your experience with ABS in your previous business, uh, job with actually. Processing these claims and whatnot?
Well, if it's flexible spending, you have a debit card.
Yeah.
And they were always great. We never had a problem.
How, how does ABS make their money? They're not making it from four dollars and ninety-five cents per enrollment fee, I mean, or.
I think they are. You can walk the buy it across if you have, you know, fifty people take it. They're getting the set fee of four hundred and twenty dollars plus, you know, fifty people at five bucks a month. So I think that is how they're making their money.
So we don't think that they're charging, um, a fee against the accounts. It's just the one.
No, the four seventy-five is the only fee they're paying.
A month.
Per month.
For person.
Per person, yes.
Is that being paid by deduction of their checks?
Or is it on their account?
I think it's probably going to be tied to their account, but I don't know that. That the contribution will definitely be a payroll deduction because that's how they get their pre-tax.
Yeah.
Uh, benefit out of it.
Other questions or comments?
This is, do they work, so this in some cases would require an EOB. Do they have some sort of tie-in with the insurance company or does the?
No, you have to provide everything to them.
Okay.
And same with, um, the dependent care, you're either writing a check or you're getting a reimbursement to yourself. And, uh, you'd have to provide that the cost was spent on whatever. And you could be audited. They, they do at times request people to provide EOBs, copies of checks. If they're looking for reimbursement, that kind of stuff, proof of payment.
Yep.
Clear as mud?
So this company then will handle all of the transactions and any questions or concerns that employees have will go straight to them and not to you.
Right.
Just, it, it would work similar to how we do app like now, you know?
We're kind of the conduit is what it really boils down to. But it's a benefit that we don't offer our employees currently.
I don't have a problem offering that, but I just need to make sure.
Any other questions or comments? Um, I'd ask for a move to accept the proposal from Advanced Benefit Strategies Inc. and authorize the signature of the first line.
Make that one. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you for your good work on that. All right, it's lunch reports. Um, on March eleventh, I met with the incoming executive director of the East Windsor Housing Authority, Marissa Pryor. Uh, Marissa is from right here in town and has been very involved in our community over time. Please join me in wishing her much success in her new role. I look hel, I, I look forward to helping her however I can. Um, that same night, on the night of the eleventh, I met with a student from East Windsor Middle School named Jacob. I'm not going to share his last name because he. I don't want to do that. I don't think that's bad. Um, I met Jacob at Career Day at East Windsor Middle School earlier this month. Jacob, his sister and his parents met with me right here at Town Hall for over an hour. Um, and we had a great conversation about this impressive young man's interests in government. We toured Town Hall. And he even stayed and met with a couple of Board of Education members to talk about his ideas for ways of changing the curriculum to better service. Um, what they're looking to do from, from a student perspective. Uh, this kid, if I, if I shared with you his full name, y'all should write it down because h- his name is going to be known. He is a very impressive young man. Um. The town is continuing to move forward on the community center project. This week, we met with the program representatives from the USDA on finalizing our next steps. Making sure to satisfy all of their needs. Uh, they have been tremendous partners so far. We appreciate their guidance as we take this important community undertaking. Uh, on the nineteenth, I joined school administrators and teachers at the middle school and the high school, as well as leaders from the North Central Chamber of Commerce. To present three Acts of Kindness Awards to students. The Acts of Kindness Awards are nominated by their teachers and selected by the chamber, not because of their academic or athletic accomplishment. But because of good character and good deeds. It's really a pleasure to join in the recognition of some genuinely good deeds that are in our school community. Uh, and it's a nice way of recognizing people for something a little bit different than, uh, ways in which recognition is today. Um, two events are booked tomorrow. Uh, first, the East Windsor Middle School Chorus will be performing at the Senior Center at twelve thirty. All are welcome to attend. And tomorrow evening is, uh, is the rumble on South Main Street. Uh, the East Windsor Police Department will be playing the, in a charity basketball game against our high school boys and girls varsity teams. Both of whom incidentally had very good seasons, just saying. Uh, the game begins at six o'clock. Tickets are five dollars per person. It can be purchased ahead of time through Parks and Rec or at the door. Proceeds will go to benefit scholarships, uh, scholarships for our summer camp programs. My whole household is really, really excited about this and I'm, I'm letting, uh, our, our five-year-old son. Uh, pick where we're sitting and I don't know if he's going to want to sit with the police officers or with the, the basketball players. And I say that, that wasn't a misstatement. It's police officers and the basketball players. It's gonna be awesome. I cannot wait.
Just act that badge.
This, this Saturday is the annual Easter Bunny Breakfast, which will be also at the Senior Center from eight thirty to eleven thirty. Uh, six dollars for adult, three dollars per child. We're asking cash only. The benefits for that will also go to our summer camp scholarships. Um, Congressman Larson will be at the Senior Center on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, to discuss the future of Medicare and Social Security. Uh, new benefits that are available for enrollees through those programs. Um, that will be at one o'clock. Um, the budget proposals from the Board of Selectmen and Board of Education will be presented next Wednesday, right here at seven o'clock, followed by a public hearing. Hosted by the Board of Finance ahead of their work on the budget. Um, and Social Services is in the process now of accepting applications for renters rebate. Can reach out to Social Services for more information on that. Marie?
Yeah, um, I had a short meeting since last meeting, the first one, um, I apologize, I don't have any. I attended a police mission, uh, meeting, um. They went through their finances, I grew it all, and then, um, two items that I felt noteworthy to report tonight. Um, is one newly hired officer, um, that just, uh, started and was doing quite well. Um, has decided that he's going back to his original, um. State, um, so he's no longer with us. Um, and the police primary has begun some hiring and I believe we're at our full capacity right now. And full disclosure was made on a position of, um, a dispatcher that was hired. That has a relationship in town, so full disclosure and writing was given to the police commission that night. Um, so this way they're in compliance with, um, the charter. So, am I right, Marie? I have all, all staffing right now, three in the academy, one.
Two, one coming down. The officer that initially wanted to resign and go back to the home state. Uh, has now since rejoined the force after. Over some personal issues. So we're, he's back with us. That's the only, only change on your.
Okay.
That's happened since the.
Thank you. Um, and last night I attended the, um. Housing Authority meeting, uh, prior to the Housing Authority meeting, the second meeting of the newly established. Five oh one C three committee, um. Had some discussions on, um. How we're going to start and where we're going to go. So that's a process. And everything that was discussed last night at the meeting is everything that I already reported previously, so you're just continuing on. Um, trying to get the paperwork in for the grant money that we talked about tonight and get everything that they need for that. Um, they have to give away ten years study that they haven't done, which was stated requiring them to do itself.
Okay, Sarah.
Okay, uh, mine is quite lengthy, so please bear with me. On March twelfth, I attended the Arts and Culture Committee meeting. After some heartfelt discussion about their previous meeting. The group unanimously decided that they would like to remain a committee at this time. The birdhouse kits from Home Depot and Lowe's are still out of stock and they still have a list of twenty-six people. That had signed up to participate in the birdhouse decorating contest. During the meeting, I reached out to Charlie Nordell, who agreed to make the birdhouse kits in his wood shop. So over the weekend, I helped him bag up the parts for each kit. So now everyone who signed up will still be able to take part. Just a reminder that Open Mic Night is April twenty-seventh at the Connecticut Trolley Museum. The preparation for Arts and Culture Day on May eighteenth is moving right along. Two music acts are confirmed, three food trucks, seven vendors and several demonstrations. And hands-on activities will be offered to the public. The event will be from twelve to four at East Windsor Park. On March thirteenth, the Board of Education met. March is Board of Education Appreciation Month. And board members were recognized and thanked for their dedication and service. Um, snacks and baked goods were provided and many thank you notes, um, from students were given to board members. Also, on behalf of the Board of Education, nine books representing one for each board member. Were donated to each of the school libraries. The school district received a grant in the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars to be used for a twenty twenty-four. Summer enrichment program. An overview was given by Daryl Ruliar. This program is Monday through Friday for six weeks, divided into three two-week sessions. Melissa Maltese paid, played a significant role in the preparation for this project, excuse, yep, for this program and. It will be in conjunction with the summer camp at East Windsor Park. Academic enrichment will occur from eight to eleven AM and Parks and Recreation Camp will be from eleven thirty to four. Or thirty, pre-K through fourth grade students are eligible to attend. Transportation for East Windsor students will be available in the AM, but students will need to obtain means to get home. To and from transportation will be available for Hartford students. The program has space for twenty to sixty students in each session, session. And can accommodate fifty different students during the program. The program will focus on ELA, math, and STEM, fostering positive relationships and healthy development. And aligns with Connecticut literacy standards and the science of reading. CREC controls the enrollment aspect and I'll provide more information as it becomes available. Breakfast, lunch and snack will be provided. It's important to note that East Windsor is only able to provide this program because the grant was secured. And the school system was able to work with Parks and Rec to design a program that fits the parameters of the grant. There was also a presentation given on educator diversity. It has proven that all students benefit from the talents of teachers from a variety of different outcomes, races and ethnic groups. The goal of this program is to focus on student outcomes and bolster the teacher pipeline. Because currently, there doesn't seem to be a lot of people who are looking to be a teacher. Um, program enrollment is. Um, program enrollment is down thirty percent. At this time, fifty point seven percent of our student population are considered people of color. And the district would like to attract top talent that is diversified and representative of the students we serve. And create an inclusive, supportive and engaging culture that promotes a sense of staff belonging. The Board of Education received the presentation and voted to approve the plan as it is mandated by the state. Um, I was unable to attend the Veterans Commission meeting because it was moved to Wednesday and I was at the Board of Ed. And uh, Jason already mentioned the basketball game, so that's all that I have.
Thank you. Jay.
I attended the uh, the Board of Assessment Appeals Meeting. Um, I was uh, quite interested to see they spent hours. Um, and hours hearing. Hearing assessment appeals from the public, uh, based upon evaluations for their homes. They do an amazing amount of difficult work. They have to interact with the public. They're evaluating. Lot of data of different sources and I give them a lot of credit. We had no idea how hard the Board of Assessment Appeals is working. Um, to do their work. Tended a Board of Finance meeting. They're starting their um, their budget deliberations and anyone that's interested in. Hearing more from the Board of Finance should be attending the the meetings that are coming up shortly now. I had attended an Arts and Culture Committee meeting. I had um, reported on that previously after the meeting. I wrote a long email explaining why after hearing their mission and what they're doing. I thought that it'd be best that they uh remain a committee and not not move to a commission. Um, and I'm glad to hear tonight that that they've made that recommendation as well for themselves. I think it would be um important for us to maintain the the committee with their current mission versus um. Becoming becoming a commission. I also attended the uh Park and Recreation Committee meeting. Commission meeting and um, there's good news there. They've decided that uh they are not going to be charging. Uh, town residents for admission into the park, over Reservoir Park. Which is, which is really awesome because we have a. Uh, a fund, a state-funded uh playground over there and there's great facilities for everyone to go in there and use and. Go for walks and and uh, there won't be admission fees for town residents. This is something that I'm proud to say I've been advocating for quite some time. Um, we have a number of people in the community, including a number of us. That have been supporting this and um, to see it occur is really um, is really great. Um, so it will not be admission fees to the Reservoir Park for town residents. Um, in the future. That's my report.
Thank you.
Awesome. I attended the planning and zoning like commission meeting last week. They're probably the shortest meeting they've had in the years and years that I've been attending their meetings, which was nice. Um, but they did have. They they are in the, they have a, they've continued their public hearing that they had open for, you know, which is, it's got to be about forty days. Uh, in, you know, taking public comment on the Warehouse Point Design District changes. Um, they had planning and zoning mission had sent a letter, I think to everybody. Uh, in Warehouse Point, letting them know that this was going to happen. So, meeting prior, which I missed because I was um. Uh, you know, recovering, um, they had quite a bit of input. So, nobody showed up this la- last week, but they decided to hold it open for yet another meeting. To make sure that all that the, they did address the concerns that people had and wrote and and made the changes. They're working on a few other changes. That would, I think, address all the concerns that were brought up at that previous meeting. So again, they held it open for this next meeting, so if anybody wants to get in on that. Um, and have something to say about it, uh, they certainly can. Um, I was just kind of reviewing the documents because I've been following this for a number of years. We started this project. It might have been in two thousand eighteen, but it was certainly two thousand nineteen. So it's been going on for a long time and and the public participation started in two thousand nineteen. So there's been a lot of input into this and it's uh. It's good to see that come to fruition. I think that's going to uh improve the business climate in Warehouse Point as well as. Um, make it easier for people to make changes to their houses. Um, then the only other meeting I had was the Fire Department, which I had missed this week, so uh, I'll report on that next time around. You take.
All right. Turning out of public participation again, this is probably the second opportunity to address members of the public. I'll first ask if there's anybody in the room who would like to address the board and then provide the same opportunity to folks online. If you'd like to address the board, please state your name and your address and state your business. Yes, sir.
My name is Wayne Sheridan. I live in Deepwater City. I've addressed this this is the third time. Uh, narrow. Sectional road at the bottom of Deepwater Street between Harry Lane and East Road. Where's this? Lake Heather? Yeah, I notice, thank you. Increased presence of police. You know, I don't think they. They like it when you cheer when they stop in front of your house and give somebody a take, but. It's uh, it's it's been noted, thank you. And um, now we have lost before, which it had a little space to jump off, somebody was coming down, but. You know, again, it's, the people are walking in the dark. And um. I suggested a streetlight. I don't know where that's going with that, but now we have zero. Place to go, not even that people walking. Because now they put guide rails up and they go right to the tar, right to the edge of the street. So now, now you lost a foot on each side and there's no room to go. Unless you want to jump over the rail, which is a little bit more difficult than. I I don't know what to tell you. You know, well, who go with this? This is the third time I rock this off. Hearing any response?
Well, I I think the. I, I shouldn't do the back and forth thing. I'm happy to chat with you online and see if we can come up.
If you're streetlight, you can't put roll phones up, can't see the sidewalk, can't. That's the least. Uh, of you, we can do. Where do we go with that? Who do I see?
I I'm happy to follow, buddy.
Thank you.
Other comments from members of the public? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Broadbrook. I think the Board of Selectmen should uh sponsor a contest. To see if there's some way we can. Make that ugly water pipe down at the dam look better than it does in Africa. Maybe uh. Some magic. An invisible curtain so it doesn't show. I don't know, but I'm sure. I don't think it was expected. But we're all surprised by the big ugly pipe. The pipe used to go under the bridge. I don't know why it couldn't continue going under the bridge, but there may be a legitimate reason for that. Could be Army Corps of Engineers said something. Well, no, I don't know. I know it's a water company project. But it, it's one of the ugliest things we've been fortunate enough to get them done for a while.
Thank you.
Three curious questions. One, has your son learned how to flip a coin yet? You know where I'm headed with this?
Uh, oh, yeah, I don't think he has learned how to flip a coin yet. Uh, he carries around a a silver dollar or a pad dollar.
Well, that's the same thing, but. And start up, he might help him out for tomorrow night. Number two. The weather for Saturdays, is it going to impact the Fire Department's uh breakfast?
It's not the Fire Department's breakfast, it's Parks and Recreation that's doing the um, the bunny breakfast. Um, if there is an indication of that, we'll notify it. We'll notice it on the town website and I'll probably do a call to that effect.
Okay. And three, can we get a? I said the cook won't be there this summer. Well, that answers that. Number three, can we get a grant to hide that plate?
I'm gonna. What they're planning for. Uh, and start with that. We don't know.
It is certainly noticeable.
Yes, it is. My hope is it was temporary. But I don't think it is. Any other public comment? Anyone online like to address the members of the board? We'll have a a very brief executive session. I asked if we um, going to executive session to include Amy O'Toole, yeah, you're not. Yes, okay. Um. Can I have a motion, please?
Move that we go into executive session, five of us including Amy O'Toole.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, we're in executive session at eight oh one. Uh, it is eight oh six. We're out of executive session. Um, I'd ask now the board to take up agenda item nine C.
Make a motion to approve the agreement between the town of East Windsor, Connecticut and Amy C O'Toole and authorize first liking the signs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion for made and seconded. For special purposes, I'm I'm just going to reiterate how how much I think, uh, how much I think of Amy and the value she brings to. Her her department and to the town. She's cleaned up a tremendous amount of uh financial practices. Bringing us to where we should be, uh, and she's an invaluable part of our team and I I appreciate everything she does. Other question, other comments? To accept the agreement between the town and Amy C O'Toole and authorize my signature. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Abstain.
With no further business to come before this, the Board of Selectmen motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move that we adjourn at eight oh eight P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at eight oh eight P M.